The regular meeting of the Temple City City Council, October 6, 2022 order. If I could have Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Visgara? Your microphone's muted, sir. Councilmember Visgara?
Here.
Thank you. I see him on the screen. Mayor Protem Yu?
Here.
Mayor Chavez?
Here. Okay, pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N. 2920.
I just unmuted it. Can you hear me?
issued by Governor Newsom on March 17, 2020, cities are allowed to hold city council meetings via teleconferencing, and members of the public can observe and address the meeting telephonically or electronically. Those of you who are calling in, your microphone will be unmuted during public comment, and when public comment is open during an agendized item discussion. You can also email your requests to cityclerk@templicity.us. You should do that now and indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comment. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and start with our invocation. And I believe we have Jerry Jambezi on the line. Jerry, you there?
Yes, I'm here, Mayor.
Hey, so Jerry, of course, needs no introduction. Jerry Jambezi, a wonder cleaner and photographer extraordinaire. Although photo ops are few and far between these days, unfortunately, right, Jerry?
Yes, unfortunately.
So with that said, welcome. Thank you for being with us tonight, and we'll turn the mic over to you.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Let's bow in prayer. We believe there is a God who bends his ear to listen, and so we pray. God of light and life, be with your people this day, so that those who are wearied by the changes of this life may feel your peace and your presence. Grant wisdom to our mayor and council members and city leaders, gathered here virtually as they are faced with balancing good versus risk and program versus safety. Help them to be gentle with themselves and with others as they map our city's way through uncharted territory. In addition to tending to the routine business of leading a great community such as Temple City, give our council the courage of the models who have shown light in our city's past, such as Walter Temple. Grant the mayor and the leaders of our city to believe that they can make a difference in this world, so that they can do what others claim cannot be done, to bring peace and kindness to all Temple City citizens. We also want to thank you for our sheriffs and our firefighters, who have been through so much lately protecting life and property. We continue to pray for our president and all of those suffering with COVID, and for all the families affected by this virus. All of this we ask in the name of the one whose power working in us can do far more than we could ever ask or imagine. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jerry. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. If we will all please rise for our pledge of allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you very much for that. We will now move on to Item 6, Public Comments. An item is not listed on the agenda. The council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. And I'll start by first asking the clerk if there are any email requests to speak at this time.
Yes, Mayor. I do have public comments emailed.
Go ahead.
Thank you. The first email I have is from Emily Mason. Dear Councilmember, please stand with the people of the city to defend equality under our constitution and reject State Measure 16. State Measure 16 would amend our constitution and allow the state government to discriminate between Californians based on race, sex, color, ethnicity, or national origin. Californians overwhelmingly reject State Measure 16. A poll of 1,704 California residents released on September 16 by the Public Policy Institute of California show voters opposed to State Measure 16 by huge margins. Eighty percent of voters have decided on, decided how to vote, and 60% of voters who have decided are opposed to State Measure 16. Californians in every area of the state reject State Measure 16. And Los Angeles, 53% of voters who have decided how to vote are opposed to State Measure 16. Please join, join us in defending California's unity and equality. Don't divide us. Don't amend our constitution to allow the state government to discriminate between Californians based on race, sex, color, ethnicity, or national origin. Please re-ack my comment aloud in the City Council Meeting General Comment Session. Sincerely, Emily Mason. Second email from Ashley Owen. Dear City Council, I'm a concerned resident. My name is Ashley Owen. I am concerned about a proposition coming out in November, that is State Measure 16. State Measure 16 permits the government to discriminate based on race or gender. This is clearly illegal, and we request our elected officials to take a position against it. Oddly, supporters of State Measure 16 state that State Measure 16 benefits people of color and education and government contracting. But where is the language in the proposition that says that? Instead, the proposition merely eliminates the California constitution that says you cannot, based on race or gender. This is the reason why the residents of the city are against State Measure 16. We must stand against racism in all forms. Thank you, Ashley Owens. And then the last email public comment I have is from Gary Young. I'm a Democrat, and I am a concerned resident. The reason why both of these are important is because, as a Democrat, I am being told that I must support Proposition 16, because Proposition 16 will prevent discrimination. This is a lie. Proposition 16 is one of the most ridiculous propositions I have ever seen. It allows for one or two groups of people to be elevated above all other races. While I may benefit, I cannot accept, I cannot accept my party, accept my party telling me I must vote a certain way merely because the party says so, especially when it is racist. Therefore, please vote against Proposition 16. Thank you, Gary Young.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, for those who are calling in, we will now unmute your microphones. Is anybody who is on the line wish to speak at this time? Hearing none, I will close public comments. We will now move on to Item Number 7, our Consent Calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion. Madam Clerk, do we have any email requests to speak on Item 7?
No, Mayor.
Okay, and is there anyone who is on the line wish to speak regarding Agenda Item 7? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Consent Calendar tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a second, unless there's any objection. If we could have roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Visgara? Sir, your microphone is muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, thank you. We will now move on to Item Number 8, Public Hearing. Item A is an introduction and first reading of Ordinance Number 20-1047. So it is a code amendment of Title IX zoning regulations, Chapter 1 zoning code. We'll have a presentation by management analyst Cohen. Mr. Cohen, it's all yours.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
I believe so.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor Chavez, Mayor Protem Yu, and councilmembers. Tonight, you're being asked to review and consider adoption of a series of amendments to our city's zoning code. These changes, which staff began working on back in the spring, and which the Planning Commission reviewed in April, and also recommended your approval. We've been working on these for many months now. They're not really urgent changes. As you know, we've waited this much time to bring it to you, but they are changes that will help to improve some of the clarity in our zoning code that we have. So as you know, back in January 2020, we began using a new zoning code. And in the months that followed after that was adopted, staff began identifying areas in the code that needed cleaning up. The areas that needed revision fall into four different categories. The first would be typos and reference errors. These are not substantial changes. The other, the second category would be changes that would be mandated by SB 234, changes that will help the new code become consistent with the old zoning code, and then lastly, changes that help to improve clarity in some of the existing provisions in the code. Now, I'm not going to bore you guys to death by going through the first category, since those do not represent a substantial change. They're just errors and minor typos. I'm going to focus the presentation on these last three categories, which are the substantial changes. So we'll move, we'll start with the changes mandated by SB 234. This bill, or SB 234, is known as the Keep Kids Close to Home Act. And what it did was, it said that cities must now allow by right small and large family daycare homes. That, what that means is that we have to treat daycare homes as any other residential use, and we can't apply any special development standards to daycare homes. Our code currently differentiates between large family daycare homes and small daycare homes. And you're probably wondering, what are large and small family daycare homes? So if we were going to go just based off of what the, what the zoning code says, a large family daycare home is one which provides childcare for seven to 12 students, or, I'm sorry, not students, children. And a small family daycare home is one that provides childcare for six or fewer children. And that is, the childcare is being done inside somebody's home, and it's for less than 24 hours. It's just daycare. So as I said, we can't, we now can't treat these as a special use. So the revision that we're making to the zoning code is to remove references to large family daycare from the zoning code, and also removing the special development standards that we had in the code for those, because we can't, we can't create any special ones. These are, our hands are tied. This is simply something that came from the state. So that's pretty much it. That wraps up what that change is. Next, we're going to move on to...
Mr. Cohen, I do have a question. So there will be no limit whatsoever with family daycare?
Could you repeat the question again?
So would there be an upper limit on the number of kids one can have in the family daycare?
I don't think so. At this point...
So I could theoretically, I could operate a daycare standard with 100 kids in my house.
I think it would be limited, obviously, by the size of the, you know, the occupancy of the dwelling unit. But the differentiation...
How do we measure that? How, what, so, okay, now we're limited. We allow all users, but wouldn't there be any limitations that you can put on the use? Because it seems to me that should be at some, at some point, it would hit the saturation point.
Yeah, that's a very good question, and staff can definitely look into that to see if there's anything that we can, that can be brought up on that, on that question.
All right, thank you.
Now, I'll imagine that...
I would imagine that there are some separate set of rules that deal with daycare and what they can or cannot do, and, and how many students one can have in a certain sized building. I would imagine those would be applied to this situation. I don't know. Mr. Murphy, what do you think?
Yes, sir. The state has regulations, and honestly, I don't have them in front of me right now, but the size of your facility is going to determine the numbers of students you may have. The number of rooms dedicated is going to determine, not only the number of students, but the division between older and younger students. All of that's run through the State Department that regulates daycare operations. Essentially, the change that's coming, it, it used to be that the smaller were allowed by right, and the larger we could impose conditions of approval on or require them to come through with a conditional use permit. The change that's SB 234 enacted, it gets rid of that distinction between the large and the small. We can't condition them from a land use perspective, but the state will still regulate them. I'll leave it up to staff to gather that information and the specifics on it. But yes, there is a State Department that regulates these.
We could definitely, we'll definitely follow up with you when we come back for the second reading, and we can discuss that further. For now, just know that these changes are simply changes in the zoning code that we are no longer allowed to have in our zoning code by state law. And so we're basically cleaning this up so that we're in conformance with state law. Moving on, yeah, no problem. Moving on, the second category that I'm going to discuss is the changes that would help bring the new zoning code into conformity with the previous code. When we put together the new zoning code, we weren't simply wanting to make changes for the sake of change. We made changes where it made sense, and we wanted to keep existing provisions in the code that, you know, the city had used for a long period of time and had no problem with. As you would expect, once we started using this new code, there were certain provisions that were just inadvertently left out. It was unintentional. So right now, we're just wanting to go back and put those provisions back in the new code so that there's not going to be any more confusion, especially for members of the development community on how, how projects are supposed to be designed. So that brings me to the first change, and that deals with the definition of floor area ratio. The previous code explained floor area ratio in great detail. It explained what had to be counted towards floor area ratio. Floor area ratio, or FAR for short, is a tool used by planners to reduce the mass of two-story buildings so that there's less of an impact on neighboring, neighboring houses. In its most basic form, FAR is basically the first and the second floor added together and divided by the lot size. Now, in our old code, we had other, we required other features of a house to also be counted towards floor area ratio. And those features basically were, the first one would be high ceiling area. And that meant specifically that any area in a house that was over 12 feet, so basically like a vaulted ceiling in a living room, if it was over 12 feet, that additional area needed also to be counted in the floor area ratio calculation. The other category was patio covers that had a solid roof. So if they were more than 50% covered. Accessory structures, we're not talking about parking. We're talking about like pool houses, workshops, accessory dwelling units. Any of those types of units also needed to be counted towards floor area ratio. And then lastly, large roof overhangs, so architectural features. All of these categories...
I want to, I want to ask a question. Did you say accessory dwelling unit is counted in part of the FAR?
It would be included in the total living area on the structure. So FAR by its definition is the total living area on the, on the lot. So that would be the ADU, all of those things. Now, I should mention, state law regarding ADUs, state law has tied the city's hands a great deal with the regulation of ADUs. And state law specifically says that irregardless of what your FAR is on your lot, you are, as a homeowner, you're still entitled to build an ADU on your lot. So there is that exception, and that, that's accounted for in the zoning code.
That's why I asked that question. So the fact that the zoning code has limitations, essentially stay lost, forget it, we're not, you're not allowed to enforce it. Am I correct?
Exactly. But it would, we would still be able to, we would still be able to count workshops, pool houses, other types of accessory structures in the FAR calculation. And again, the whole purpose of this is just to set limitations on the total mass of the building, buildings on the lot so that it doesn't affect neighboring properties. So the next, the next category of changes that we want to bring back, back into the new code deals with conditional use permits for accessory structures. We're not talking about ADUs here. We're talking specifically about accessory structures that are not living spaces. So perhaps someone wants to put a workshop in their backyard, and they'd like to have a bathroom, which is very common. They might have a bathroom in the, in the workshop or a sink. The previous code said that anytime you add plumbing to an accessory structure, you need to go through the conditional use permit process. And the, the reason for this was strictly to make sure that the city could review the application and understand what the purpose of adding the plumbing was. Sometimes people would tell us that, hey, I'm putting a workshop in, and I'm going to add a sink, but the real intention was to create a living space. We have a process for creating accessory structures that are living spaces, specifically ADUs. So requiring conditional use permit for all the other types of accessory structures will just ensure that staff and the planning commission can review and make sure we know exactly what it, what the purpose of this structure is for. The next category of changes was the allowing of rental of bedrooms in a single-family unit. So the previous code allowed you to rent up to two bedrooms. The current code does not allow you to rent any bedrooms, and staff feels that it's reasonable to allow rentals in a bedroom. We're proposing that we would limit it to just one bedroom, and this would only be allowed if the property doesn't already have an ADU or a junior ADU on the site. And we would want them, if they're going to rent a bedroom out on their property, we would want them to have adequate parking. That parking requirement would not be any different than what we would require for an ADU. And basically, that means that if they can provide adequate parking on their driveway, then we would allow it. I, another question that might be asked, how we, how would we enforce this? Primarily, it's going to be through reactive code enforcement. So if, for example, we become aware that there's a short-term rental going on on this property, we might become aware of it in that way and let the property owner know that they're only allowed to rent one bedroom on their property, and it needs to at least be 30 days or more.
Question?
Yes.
On enforcement, I know it's retroactive and unfortunate, but let's say you find out somebody has two bedroom rented out in violation of this code. And but then the owners, the landlords, say, well, I have had signed two-year leases with my tenant. So do we still make them evict their tenants?
Yeah, in a situation like that, we probably would.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Moving on to the next section, dealing with open space. So the previous zoning code required there to be 500 square feet of open space for a dwell, for a single-family dwelling. And then if, if the property had an ADU on the property, they also needed to have 400 square feet of open space for that ADU. And this was simply to ensure that each of those dwelling units have an adequate private yard area in their backyard. The new code that we have right now requires the 400 square feet for the ADU, but it's not requiring any open space for the main house. So this was simply an oversight, and we want to put this back into the code with a couple modifications. And those modifications are that we want that open space to, to at least be 75% landscaped and, and say that at least up to 25% of it can be covered with a roof or patio. And basically, we just want to make sure that that open space has landscaping, that it's not simply just a large concrete area. Now, the diagram that I have here kind of shows you the reason that we want to require this. Just going off of the current code requirements we have today, if you have a house and an ADU on their property, you need to have a 10-foot distance between those structures. The ADU only needs to have four feet on the side and in the rear. So I think it kind of, the diagram really shows you that there's not a lot of space for both of these units to have an adequate yard area. So requiring the 500 square feet for the house and the 400 for the ADU will just ensure that each unit has adequate yard. Mr. Cohen, I think... Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. So I know that we, our zoning code that require impervious area. So that can call, so the, the open space can be counted towards that as well, right?
Yes, you can. Mm-hmm. And, and the front yard also would be considered impervious surface area. But we wouldn't consider the front yard part of the open space requirement. Open space requirement, we're talking specifically the backyard. Or if you have a really deep side yard, you could also consider the side yard your open space. But it's to create a, to create a backyard for each unit.
I have, I have a quick question. So a little confused here, because on the report, it says that the change is to provide 500 square feet of open space per dwelling.
Right.
And so the house on your, on your diagram, that means the house has to have 500 square feet of open space on the lot. And then the ADU, if there's an ADU, I think you said it has to have 400 square feet of open space?
That's correct. It's, that's what's currently in the code. The ADU has to have 400.
That we're not changing. That's just in the code now.
Yeah, we're not changing that.
So the only thing we're changing is the 500 for the main dwelling of the house.
Right, because if you only, right now, with the current code, if we only had the 400 square feet for the ADU, if you look at this diagram, this area, the 10-foot distance between the house and ADU, that would basically be the open space for the ADU, and there would not be any open space for the main house. So that's why we're...
So on your diagram, on this particular lot, with the way it's set up, they need at least 900 square feet of open space. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all right.
And then divide it between the two, two, two units. Okay.
I have a, I have a question. Yeah, I have a question about that. So the, so the 500 feet of open space, do we, does the code define that as being in the rear portion of the property, or is there any? Because you're saying it doesn't count as the front yard. So is it safe to presume that everything must be in the back?
Yes, the, yeah, the code, the code says that the open space, it's, the front yard is not counted as open space, and that the open space needs to have at least a depth of 10 feet. So that's why, for example, this ADU, the four feet that they have in the side and the rear behind the ADU would not be able to be counted as the open space, because it's not, it's not substantial enough. It's not deep enough.
So if, if say, if say we took your diagram and pretend that was a shallow lot, but wide, how would that work?
If it was a shallower lot?
Like, let's, let's say your lot is now more wide than it's deep.
Okay.
Where would, where would that open space be defined?
And you could, you could definitely put the open space in the side yard. That would be an option.
Okay, so, okay, so it can be, it can be, it can be in the side. Okay, got it. Thank you.
No problem. Moving on, the other change that we want to make in the new code to be consistent with the old is requiring that anytime someone puts a new washing machine or appliance, that they need to put that inside a, a structure. Right now, the new code doesn't say anything about that. So theoretically, a person could put it out on their back patio, which is the... Um, which is the reason the code, we added it in the old code was that. Just simply for aesthetic purposes, it made sense to keep the appliances inside. Um, with one exception, if you have a existing house and you've got a water heater um. On the outside of your house, the, the city's not going to come and tell you, hey, you got to put that water heater inside. If, if it's already there. Um, and you're going to replace it, you can continue to have it outside. We're, we're talking about new, new appliances, um, like on new construction, uh, new washing machines, that type of thing.
What if they have a washing machine and dryer out on the patio right now? Would that can be a violation of the code?
Um, if it's existing, it would, I wouldn't consider it a violation of the code, but if they were going to come to us and have an addition, like. You know, submit a plan to do an additional remodel on their house, we would tell them to put the washing machine, find a place for it inside a structure.
Okay, so in your report, it says existing water heaters are exempted. I would have, I would, then based on your, your uh statement, then existing. Existing uh washing machines and dryers are also exempted.
It would only, yeah, we're, we're only calling out existing um, existing water heaters.
Um, yeah, but. Yeah, we're just, you just got through saying though that if somebody has an existing washing machine and dryer outside. That's going to be okay until they apply for a, a remodel or something, but let's say they never do. Then that means that those machines can stay outside, correct? And not be in violation.
Right. It's, it's a, yeah, that's definitely a possi- possibility.
Actually, so we're actually exempting existing water heaters and washing machines and dryers.
Uh, would, the way it's written, definitely that would be the conclusion I would uh come to as well. So that's definitely something we can discuss and see if, how, you know, whether we want to modify that or change the language in it.
Well, it appears to me that the, the driving force behind this change is to. Reduce clutter and improve the appearance of the city's residences. In this picture you have before us, we have a washer and dryer standing outside in the yard. Which to most people would not be very appealing. And so I'm assuming then that under the current code, there's no problem with it as long as they don't. Apply for a new building permit.
If, if I may, um, Mayor, the, going into the actual ordinance, it reads. All washing machines and dryers must be located within the main structure or an accessory structure. Um, so if, if we find that that condition exists, then the washer and dryer would need to be moved inside. If the council wants to, wants to exempt ones that are pre-existing or pre-existing the ordinance, we can go ahead and make that change um at the second.
No, I don't want to make that exemption. I just want to make it clear that we're not, we're not saying, okay. You can do it because uh, that's what I was hearing, but so in the code, it already provides. So this picture here. Is not what we would say is allowable in, in, in Temple City.
That, that's correct, and that, that was the case in the old zoning code as well.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
Good. Well, thank you.
But it's not time for discussion, but I think I, I'd like to come back to that uh during time of discussion.
Definitely. Um, moving on now, um, the next section deals with um. Tenant spaces shared by multiple businesses. Um, to give an example. What we're usually talking about in this situation is you might have a grocery store that might have a bank or um dry cleaners or. Some other uh smaller business located inside the main business. Um, the, the previous code required these types of businesses to go through a CUP process so that staff could. You know, analyze the impacts that that business would have. Um, right now, under the current code, there's nothing prohibiting that. So we want to um. Reinstate the requirement that they get a conditional use permit if they're going to have another um business located within a tenant space. Now moving on to the uh last section of changes, and these are changes that are going to help to improve clarity in the code. Um, just to refine some of the existing provisions that we have. Um, the first, the first one deals with parking spaces. Um, so for example, a person, a property might have an existing uh business and. The business changes and a new business comes in. There, normally you would have to provide a certain number of parking spaces for that new business. Um. Many times you'll find that these existing tenant spaces um throughout the city, they just don't have the space for additional parking. They're already constructed, they're already built, and the new business is simply planning to locate inside that unit. They're not planning to do any construction or tear anything down. Um, so what we would do in this situation is try to determine if the new use has the same uh parking requirement as the previous use. And if it does, then we're not going to tell them that they need to provide additional parking spaces. Um, this is just a way to be business friendly so that we don't create obstacles to people wanting to uh open a business in Temple City. Simply because there's not enough parking.
Uh, I have a question about parking new years.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, William.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Uh, it, can you just maybe broadly or generally explain um? How we determine parking requirements? Is that, is there a formula? Uh, or is it subjective based on? I mean, I, I'm just trying to understand if it's, if there's a formula to calculate it, or is it something that's?
Yes, so each. Okay, no problem. I can definitely answer that. Um, in the zoning code, um, if you go to the commercial section of the zoning code. We have a list of different types of uh businesses and uses. Um, each business has a defined number of um parking spaces that that business, type of business needs to have. And it's based upon the gross floor area of the, of the unit. So just to give an example, I, I mean, I don't have a, something really concrete off the top of my head, but generally speaking, a restaurant. Would have to have more parking than say just a regular office use. Um, and that formula, it's based upon, you know, a determination of how frequently. Um, people are going to be coming and going from that business. Um, so we already have the standard in the code. Saying what type of business and how many parking spaces that type of business needs to have. So it would be like one per two hundred fifty square feet or one per three hundred square feet. Um, what we're talking about here is simply that if a new use comes in and. That, that particular site already has a deficient number of parking spaces. If, if the new use that's coming in requires the same number of spaces as the previous use. We're not going to tell them, oh, you need to provide additional spaces because. In most cases, it's going to be impossible. There's nowhere to put any new spaces. So that's, that's what we're talking about here. And this is, this was already in the old code. Uh, we kind of had a longstanding practice. We, we called it determining. Um, if there was going to be an intensification of the, of the use.
Okay.
I don't know if that answered your question.
Yeah, it, it definitely does. So, so really, the, the, the only time we would actually. Enforce the increased parking spaces, if you, if you went from say like a retail use to a restaurant. That would be an intensification use.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Oh, it sounds to me like. We're not really changing that much. Obviously, if, if the new use is um. Is, we find that the new use needs more parking than the previous use, then obviously that will be the requirement. Under the old law, it seemed like it was just like a, almost a default that a new use was considered. An intensification of use and therefore we just required more parking as a matter of course, I guess, but. Now we're going to kind of look at it and say, okay, if it's the same, we're okay. We're just going to leave it as is, but. We're still going to, we're still, I think as William said, we're still going to look at if there is an intensification, then obviously. That could be something that uh could, could work, uh, could be in the way of a, of someone taking over a location, I suppose. If they don't have sufficient parking.
Correct.
Okay, alright, thanks.
No problem. Um, moving on now, um, the next section deals with um. The distance between habitable structures. This is somewhat related to our discussion earlier about the open space. So um currently. Uh, if you had, for example, a single-family property, um, with a single-family house and they're going to build an ADU. The distance between the two units needs to be ten feet. Um, staff is recommending that we increase that distance to fifteen feet. Um, and the, the reason that we're giving for that is, is just the same reason that we gave for the open space. By increasing, adding another five feet to that distance, um, we're going to be ensuring that you've got adequate open space and adequate um. Privacy for each of the units. And as you know, the ADUs are very popular right now and um our single-family neighborhoods are. Um, I, I'm sure in the next few years, m- many, if not most of the properties in the single-family neighborhoods are going to have ADUs. So a- adding this provision uh is going to just help to ensure that. Our single-family neighborhoods continue to have the character of a single-family neighborhood. And not take on the character of a multifamily neighborhood. Um, so that's, that's pretty much the, that's the justification for this proposed change.
It would seem to me, it would seem to me that when the legislature decided to allow these ADUs, they basically. Spelled an end to uh, single-family uh. Communities, so I guess uh, this is a way to maybe mask that a little bit, but uh. You know, obviously, uh, based on your statement, uh, we're going to see a lot more and more and uh. You know, it's obviously there, we're going to have be a community of multi-use dwellings, it appears to me.
Right, if I could add to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
If I could add to that.
I think, uh, I think Mayor Potem, you had a question first, if you don't mind.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, question is, is the fifty feet only between. Uh, dwelling units and habitable structures such as an ADU, uh, does it apply to like garages? Workshops?
We, we. We would simply be talking about habitable structures here.
I know, but I'm really asking, what is habitable structure?
Habitable structure being one.
Is a workshop considered habitable? Is a garage considered habitable?
No, it's only a structure that contains living quarters.
Okay.
Okay, you're going to have to, you're going to have to revise your previous diagram that you had ten feet between the two.
Yeah. Um, the, the, the other thing I wanted just to add to this, um, you know, the question might come out, is this, is doing this going to prevent people from building ADUs? I, I wouldn't say it would because homeowners have the option of doing ADUs both attached to the house and detached. So if for some reason a person didn't have the space to provide a detached ADU in their yard, they could always still um. Have an attached one and then still have the required um yard area in the back. So. I, I, I just wanted to add that to that.
But, um, this is only R1 though. Uh, R2, you are applying that accessory structure, are you not?
Right.
Cause I'm reading from your report, this is between primary dwelling accessory structures. This is R2 that we're talking about. Um, you, you do have fifteen feet.
Right, let me, I'm not looking at the uh, report here. Give me one second so that I can pull that up.
Okay, that's page six of the ordinance.
Yeah, it says, so in, yes, you're right. So we're talking about in residential zones here. So in R2. Um, it would apply as well. The distance between primary dwellings and accessory structures uh would be fifteen feet as well.
Okay, thank you.
We can definitely come back and um discuss this if you want to make revisions to it. Um, the next section deals, the next section of uh revisions deals with um. Limiting one accessory structure and use per lot. Um, when you first enacted the ADU ordinance a few years ago. Um, you had said that you wanted to limit the number of accessory structures on a property to one, not counting the uh required garage parking. Um, staff feels that if we just kind of refine that a little bit and add a use to it. It'll just uh clarify that so that it means that. A person could have one ADU or one pool house or one workshop. They can only have one of those types of uses. Um, they couldn't have an ADU and a workshop and a pool house on the property. Um, and we feel that's just, that's in keeping with the uh council's original intent of requiring that when you first put that in the code. It just kind of refines a little bit to make it clear that we're talking about accessory structures and uses. And then also it needs to be um in the rear fifty percent of the lot.
So in this diagram you have, this diagram that you have, is that, is that a house and then an, an attached garage and then an ADU in the back?
Right, so that's the attached garage.
That's the, that's the original attached garage.
Yeah, it wouldn't be counted as a accessory structure for this purpose.
Okay.
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, uh, go ahead, uh, Vince.
Um, they, I, 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 the way I understand is that um for single-story structures such as what we're looking at. On the screen, uh, there is no floor area ratio, am I correct? It's limited by site coverage ratio, which is up to fifty percent.
Um, the, the formula is slightly changed, but basically, yes, that's right. It's only limited to.
Yeah.
The lot coverage, yeah.
Cause I remember one of the issues that we faced in the past was somebody built an accessory structure. In the rear fifty percent of the lot and we could not limit the size. And I remember there was one case. Where they built the entire fifty percent of the rear lot, of, of the lot, the rear fifty percent lot with one garage. Is it, does our code um, help us to limit that size of that accessory structure today?
Does it limit the size of it?
Yeah, because like your foyer ratio only applies if they have a two-story building. So you do, you know, the accessory structure is part of your foyer uh ratio requirement. But for a single story, uh, for a lot with only a single-story building. Because there's no floor area ratio and they get built up to fifty percent of the lot. And um, so they can essentially build um. Fill up most of the rear yard. Does, does our code give us any um? Uh, way to regulate that?
Well, uh, you're still, they're still going to be lim, yes, you have the, the lot coverage uh formula. But they still have the setback requirements and they still have the open space requirements. So all of those other requirements are going to um set limitations on the, on the actual size of it.
Uh, and, and if I may, um, uh, there's also a section of the code um that deals with accessory structures. That basically sets the maximum size of fifty percent of the living area. They are allowed to have at least six hundred forty square feet, but they're not allowed to um have something more than fifty percent of the size of the house.
So larger the house, the larger the accessory, what, uh, structure?
Yes, but even in that case, they can't have something more than fourteen hundred square feet. So there's a number of rules that they have to comply with.
Alright, great, thank you.
Okay, um, moving on to the next section.
Um, be, be, before you do.
Yes.
Why is parking exempt there? I'm, I'm not catching that.
Well, the parking we would consider exempt because you, anytime you have a living unit, you need to, you, you're going to have to provide parking. Um, and we're not going to, we don't want to penalize somebody for building a garage because we, we prefer. We would prefer garage parking over say parking on the driveway or something like that. So that we're, we're kind of trying, trying not to penalize someone who wants to build a garage to park their cars.
In addition, if, if we didn't exempt garages, um, basically someone would not be allowed to have a garage and a shed. Or a garage and an ADU. So we wanted to exempt the garage from that.
Okay. And, and, and there's a distance between the two because the garage is back where it is in this drawing. The, uh, the square footages are still the same? Or are they less?
The garage square footage, it would be the same.
No, the, the land square footage, the open space.
Yeah, I mean, this diagram here is, uh, it's not, it doesn't take into account like what we were talking about earlier. Requiring the um five hundred square feet and then the. requiring the 500 square feet and then the 400 square feet for the, actually, I, I take that back. I think it does. It's just, it's hard to see it because of the angle that it's on a.
So there would be 400 square feet there, let's say?
Yeah, it would probably be on the backside here. I believe that is a depth of 10 feet. And then this distance over here between the house and the ADU, that's also 10 feet as well. I drew this drawing a few years ago, so I don't, don't remember exactly what the dimensions I put on there, but I, I believe I, that's what I had.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what, what we're controlling to, that's all.
What are we controlling? We're simply just saying that you're leaving aside the question of your garage parking, you're going to only be allowed to have one other use or structure. So if you want to have a workshop, then that's going to be your structure in the back. You're not going to be able to have a a workshop and a poolhouse and an ADU.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I, I was just wondering about the land requirement, the, the open space requirement there. And I, I think I hear you saying it's still like in that case, 400 square feet.
Right, yes, yeah.
Okay.
I, I also have a question about that one. If, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the recent state changes to the ADU and forcing cities to allow ADUs and junior ADUs, if I recall, a junior ADU is a part of the main structure, right? Is that the definition of it? So here we're, we're limiting accessory uses and structures and in the changes it includes JADUs and, and ADU. So does that mean we're telling people that you can't have a JADU that's part of the main structure and a detached ADU at the same time?
No, it wouldn't, because the state law supersedes any zoning provisions that we have in our code. So we in our code will have this provision for one accessory structure or use. But the state law says that by right, you're allowed to have an ADU and a JADU. There's nothing that we can do about that particular thing. But we still think it's, it's valuable to have this because, like I said, someone could put an ADU in the backyard and then also a poolhouse and a workshop. So, and then the yard could get very cluttered.
Okay, because just on, on the surface, when I'm reading the section eight for the accessory uses and structures, it includes the junior ADU in the language. So it, it makes it read as if, you know, if you have a junior ADU, then you can't have anything else. Which isn't true, right? Because that state law allows you to have a JADU and something else.
Exactly.
We can modify that section to include junior accessory dwelling units to make it clear.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's all. I, I'm just, the way I'm reading it, it's, on, on the surface, it's, it seems a little bit, I guess misleading, if, if it's contradictory with, with what the state's requiring.
We can definitely add that in there.
Okay, thank you.
And then bringing us, I believe this is the last section. We're dealing with how we would calculate the setbacks on the second floor. So the code currently says that you have to provide an average of 10 feet on the second floor. We're, we're proposing adding the word combined because staff thinks that this might help to clarify it a little bit better. We have a diagram that illustrates how that would be calculated. I don't want to get too much into the minutia of it. But basically, what we're saying is that you take your second floor and you have to have a combined average of 10 feet. And that means that you're going to have to combine each of these sections of the second floor. And as long as you've got that 10-foot average, then you're meeting the code requirement. We, staff is also considering the possibility of if, if you approve this provision, that maybe we would put a diagram in the zoning code that just clearly lays out how a developer or contractor is supposed to calculate that, just so that there's no more confusion. So I'll just leave it at that without getting too much into the weeds. Okay, and I, I lied. We have one more provision.
Sorry, I was muted. I was going to ask you a question. Yeah, sorry, sorry, I was muted. So if I read this correctly, so what you were saying is that as long as there is an average of the, some could be more, some could be less, but when they're combined together and they average out to be 10 feet, it would be acceptable, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so the combined really doesn't change anything. It's just that it's helping the developer or, or designer to look at it and know that it definitely didn't combine all those together. Really doesn't really change the way you calculate it.
No, it doesn't. It doesn't.
Okay, okay, thanks.
No problem. And then lastly, the, the final thing is just dealing with how we define a single project. Sometimes we'll have cases where someone will do multiple projects on a, on a house or a property and kind of, you know, bits and, do it in bits and pieces. And the reason they do that, sometimes, I'm not, I, I can't, I don't know everybody's intention, but sometimes they're doing that to avoid compliance with, with code requirements. So we have a definition in the code that deals with how you define a new dwelling. So what we're saying is that if you're going to have multiple construction projects on your house within two-year period, we're going to consider that a single project. And that will just ensure that they have to require, that they have to comply with all the code requirements. So if it's a single project and it's basically they're tearing everything down, it's, it's a new dwelling and they need to comply with the requirements of a new dwelling. So that's, that's pretty much what this modification is. And
What happens in the event homeowner does a construction project and then sells his home later and then the new owner wants to do another construction project within this 24-month period? Is that treated differently because it's the new owner?
We wouldn't. Yeah, it's not by owner, it's simply by the lot. So whether it's a different owner, doesn't really matter to us. What matters is that the property and the, the structure on the lot is complying with our code requirements.
So, so then in fact, someone could do a construction project, sell the property, then that would prohibit the new owner from doing any construction within that 24-month time period, correct?
Just to be clear, it's not that they can't do any construction project. It's only that they can't do a construction project that would make that unit a new dwelling unit. We often get developments that, or we don't often do. On occasion, we get developments where someone is trying to skirt the new development laws by piecemealing their project. And so what we're trying to do is say, if you want to do something piecemeal, that's fine. You just have to make the project to put two years between the two projects. But that, that's kind of the purpose here. I, I wouldn't want to base it on who the owner is because then someone could get around this by just changing ownership of the policy, the property, filing a new deed and then just to get around the code requirements.
Well, no, I'm not promoting that it should. I'm just asking a question. Could they do that? You know, so it sounds to me like theoretically the 24-month period will apply to the owner who starts the construction and would also apply to a new owner as well. If it was in the 20, within the 24-month period.
That's correct.
Scott, you would think that that raises some notice issues on behalf of the seller to the buyer and I can see that creating a whole bunch of problems there. It sounds like Mr. Murphy is about, ready to add some legal knowledge to this.
Actually, I just, I, just, I think it's a clarification that I was going to ask for Scott. I believe that the purpose of, of this or what we're really talking about is new codes have to be complied with if it's more than 50% of the house is remodeled or there's an addition of more than 50%. And so what we're, what we're trying to do is not have them do 25% in one remodel and 30% in another remodel. Because at that point, you're at 55%. Is, is that, that's really what we're doing here, right?
That, that's correct, right.
Well, yeah, we're trying to close a little loophole, I guess, it sounds like.
You know, we're, we're not looking at somebody who maybe adds a bedroom in year one and then redoes their backyard in year two. It's really more, we're, we're trying to catch, the mayor said, close, close the loophole for people that are doing substantial amounts of work that, that really do amount to a single project. And, and mostly on the interior of the house, not a, a variety of smaller cleanup jobs.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Can you help me understand what's the significance of when a dwelling is considered a new dwelling unit versus considering it's an older dwelling unit? Because at least when it comes to building codes, any new construction has to comply with current building codes. So how, how significant is this? And I guess I'm a little, so help me understand the significance of this language.
Well, I could, one thing I could say is that from a zoning perspective, we have setbacks. When, when you have an existing structure that's legal, has permits, but it doesn't comply with today's setback requirements, it's exempted. It's grandfathered in because it's an existing structure. And even if the person was going to come in and do an addition on their house or remodel it, we're not going to penalize them because they have that non-conforming setback. But if they were going to have a new dwelling, a new construction, then we would want that new dwelling to comply with, for example, the setback requirements.
So you're really saying that the entire structure, new and, and existing portion will all fall under the new zoning requirement?
Right.
Yes, that, that's the way we.
That's the distinction.
Yeah, that's the way we've handled it in the past in previous cases where someone wanted to basically demolish the whole structure except one wall. And they wanted to argue, well, that it's an existing building. And so we would come, we had a calculation that determined whether more than 50% of the structure had been demolished or not. If, if more than 50% had been demolished, then the entire structure had to be brought up to code, the whole lot had to be brought up to code.
Yeah, 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 that's right, that's right. I think some of that actually came from people, some thought that if they save a wall, then they won't get new tax bills, which is not the case. At least, I, I, when I checked with the with the county, they said, no, it, it doesn't work that way. Anyway, thank you.
With that, go on.
Yeah, while you're on that topic, can, can you help me clarify when that 24-month period starts? Is that at the time of the permit is granted for a project or is that at the time of submission for plan check? Like, how, how's that clock start?
It, it would be a permit issuance. We wouldn't want to base it on when a project is submitted because it does take time for somebody to get submitted and to get through the process. So we would base it on permit issuance.
Okay, that, that's what I figured too, but I just want to make sure. Okay, thank you.
With that, after that very lengthy discussion, I hope I didn't bore you to death. We move on to our recommendation. And as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, the planning commission reviewed it on April 28th and recommended approval. And so this first introduction, first reading by title only, staff is recommending that you waive any further reading of it and then schedule the second reading of the ordinance for October, I'm sorry, that shouldn't say October 6th. It would be the second meeting in October. So that would be October 20th.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Cohen. Does that conclude your report?
It does.
Well, I want to thank you for your presentation and also for your patience with us as well. You didn't bore any of us. It's been quite interesting, as, as you can tell from the questions, we're quite interested in this subject. And thank you for putting it in a, in a simple way, especially for people like myself. So we will go ahead and start with council questions. Councilmember Mann, do you have any additional questions for staff at this time?
I, I asked them all by interrupting his presentation, so thank you.
I, I think we all did, you're right. But, you know, I, I was, I was feeling a little badly for Mr. Cohen because it's like, we kept interrupting him, but he handled it well. He handled it well. So, Councilmember Sternquist, any question?
I'm so sorry. I don't have any questions. I think the staff report was very thorough and took me a couple of times to read it, but I think I have a pretty good understanding.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Viscar, any questions at this time?
No, this is one of those things where we could reinvent the wheel 15 times.
Yeah, I think we have tonight a couple of times, actually. Mayor Protem, you, any questions, any additional questions?
Uh, no more questions, Mr. Mayor. I think I interrupted Mr. Cohen enough times.
No, I think it's a good, it's a good by, by play. I think both of them going back and forth. Sometimes asking questions at the end, you sometimes forget what you were going to ask. And so I think a good thing to get it while it's fresh in your mind. Okay, so I will go ahead and open public, open the public hearing, ask the, our city clerk whether or not there are any public comment emails. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sorry. No, there are no, no public comments.
Thank you. And if you'll open up the microphones, if anybody who was on the line wishes a comment on this matter at this time. Hearing none, I will close public, close public hearing. And therefore we will fi, final this, finish this with any council questions. Councilmember Mann, any final questions for staff?
Uh, no, 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 no more additional questions. I think I appreciate the effort and clarifying a lot of points. Especially the ones where things, certain things were omitted from the previous code. Overall, I, I think it was, it was well done. I, I, my only concern was just, you know, we have all these state requirements coming down the pipeline and we're, we're constantly trying to reconcile what we can and cannot do. I mean, that, the whole daycare definition issue is one of them. The ADUs are another. But I appreciate staff keeping us updated. And I, I do especially appreciate the diagrams and the drawings. I think that makes it a lot easier to visualize and understand what that modification actually means in the context of of something that, that's more tangible that we can visually look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist, any final comments?
Just that I think as we move forward, the landscape of our city is definitely going to change as more bills are put into effect. So we just have to keep our eyes and ears, you know, open and do the best we can because definitely there's quite a few things that will be coming down that are even going to be more difficult than what we just talked about.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscar, any final comments? You're on mute, Fernando.
Yeah, I just realized it. No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem, you, any final comments?
I, yes, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I really appreciate what staff have done and and Mr. Reamer and Mr. Cohen, and I think they've done a terrific job. The only thing that I have a low concern is really the application of the rules on the existing washer and dryer. Well, I think we all kind of agree that it is really unsightly to have a washer and dryer standing outside. And in my opinion, it's actually a, I would consider that a factor of bliteness, of adding the bliteness of, of a city. However, my concern is that should this become law and then we're not grandfathering in existing washer and dryers, whether or not it would create a hardship. whether or not it would create a hardship for some of our residents. Uh, I personally don't know how many people put their washers drives outside. I must say, I haven't seen that many. But it also, but however, for those folks who were forced to put them outside, I imagine they probably would be probably not in the best economic, um, uh, uh, condition as well. So I'm just concerned about the, uh, whether or not we could make that a grandfather in for the first couple, two, three years. And then maybe, uh, maybe we can enforce it, uh, later. I mean, the code maybe can stay the same, maybe it's just, uh, maybe we can have a delay uh, in enforcement on, on those for the existing washer and dryers. That's my only comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Murphy, but I don't think that's on our plate tonight. Perhaps we need to bring that back at another time, uh. Is that correct, or?
Yes, I, since, since what the mayor Protem is suggesting is, uh, delayed enforcement, uh, that would be more of a policy decision. I think what we could do in this regard, uh, staff can work up a policy to have you as the council adopt as a separate item, uh, perhaps at your next meeting or shortly thereafter in November. But in any event, before this, uh, ordinance becomes law, which is you all, it's 30 days after the second reading, and, uh, we can have you adopt a, uh, delayed enforcement policy before that time. And that should meet, uh, the mayor Protem's concern, uh, and give staff some time to think about it and work up something that, uh, that will be workable for them as well.
Greg?
Yes, ma'am.
A quick question. So anyone that currently has a washer and dryer outside and is visible would be looked the same way as a washer and dryer outside? But because of the way it's set up and it's not visible from the street, well, is that looked at separately?
I'm going to defer to, uh, uh, Mr. Reamer's and Mr. Cohen on that.
Uh, no, the code doesn't, um, differentiate between whether the washer and dryer can be seen from the street or not. Partially because some of the complaints we get are about the noise from them. Um, so that's part of the reason why.
Okay, but I, I just, I feel that if, you know, it is in the backyard or where you cannot see it and it's not really looking terrible because you cannot see it, that maybe we should look it away for those people to get a quieter washer and dryer, maybe. But it just seems difficult to penalize the people who've had it for some time and yet it's not visible from the front of the street at all. Just my thought.
Okay, no, and, and I appreciate the comments. Uh, I think it's something that, uh, we need to look at maybe another day. Uh, Brian has heard our discussion and I'm sure staff, uh, can work something up, uh, that we can at least take a look at that. I, I personally don't think it's a big, big issue in Temple City. I've actually never seen a washer and dryer in all the years I can remember driving around the streets, but I'm sure there are a few of them. But, uh, I hear the, there's pluses and minuses, but again, maybe getting a little far afield. But good points brought up and, uh, and we'll address it, I think, uh, another day. And, uh, I think we'll be able to take care of it that way, so. Mr. Cohen? We, we would come back with that sooner rather than later, uh, because as Mr. Murphy pointed out, we have 30 days for the enactment. So we would bring that back during the next meeting or the following meeting after that. Okay, that's fine. I think we should be able to handle it quickly, so. Okay, thank you. Um, I just think, uh, we'd finish up, uh, when there's any comments. Thanks staff for all the work they've done. It's not easy cleaning up code and then looking at them over and over and over. And of course having to deal with, uh, the constant changes our state legislature throws at us, uh, you know, every day it seems like. And so that, that alone is, uh, enough to keep you busy. So thank you for your patience in doing that and bringing it to us so that we can, uh, make those, um, those decisions, uh, based on, on all the work that you've done. So, all right. So, um, unless there's anything else, I will, uh, entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that, uh, we introduce for first reading by title only and wait for the reading ordinance number 20-1047, uh, Series A, Core Amendments of Title IX Zoning Regulations, Chapter One Zoning Code, and schedule the second reading of the ordinance for October 20th, 2020.
A second. We have a motion and a second. Unless there's any objection, I will ask our city clerk to please take roll call.
Yes, Mayor. Council member Mann?
Yes.
Council member Sternquist?
Yes.
Council member Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, you?
Yeah.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, we could, uh, I could ask the city clerk to please read the ordinance title.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 20-1047, An Ordinance of the City Council of City of Temple City, California, Amending Title IX, Chapter One of the Temple City Municipal Code.
Hey, thank you very much. And so, uh, we will now move on to item nine, which is unfinished business. There is none. Item 10, new business. We'll start with item A, which is our permanent local housing allocation funding. And I will turn the presentation over to, uh, city manager Cook. Thank you, Mayor Chavez and members of the council. Our management, uh, management analyst from our department, Kenny Chan, will be doing, uh, part of this presentation. Mr. Reamer is also here to assist as well. This is funding that the state of California has provided under SB 2. There are two methods in which to allocate this funding. Uh, we wanted to make sure you understood the options that are before you, uh, and Ms. Chan will go over those right now. So, Ms. Chan?
Good evening, Mayor Chavez, Mayor Protem, you and council members. Um, the item you have before you here tonight is the permanent local housing allocation funding.
You went on mute, Ms. Chan.
Sorry, where did I leave off? Um, so this PLHA funding is a result of SB 2, the Building Homes and Jobs Act. That was signed by Governor Newsom back in 2017. Um, through this act, they imposed a $75 recording fee on real estate transaction documents, um, to fund PLHA. And really the purpose of creating this fund was so that local governments could be allocated money each year for five years uh, to fund programs that would create more affordable housing and to address the issues that have arisen from the lack of affordable housing. Um, so Temple City's allocation for fiscal year 2020, 2021 is $124,815. Um, and this number will fluctuate from year to year. Um, there are 10 eligible activities that can be used with this funding, um, that the state has listed. Um, and so this funding would be administered by Los Angeles County Development Authority. And they have submitted a five-year countywide plan to use its allocation for an expanded eviction defense program. And their decision was mostly driven by the need to address the upcoming expiration on eviction moratoriums that were enacted earlier this year due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And so this eviction defense program would help provide legal support to tenants, short-term rental assistance, case management, and know your rights workshops. Um, and as you know, many of these, uh, services are already being, um, the county is already rolling out a lot of these services. Um, so LACDA notified cities in late June that cities may choose to opt out of it, out of this and to use its allocation on other eligible activities. So as Mr. Cook mentioned earlier, tonight's discussion centers on two questions. Uh, does council wish to use the city's allocation on LACDA's expanded eviction defense program? Or does council wish to use its allocation on other eligible activities that better support local housing policies? And moving on, if you could, uh, refer to Attachment E, I believe that's the very last attachment of the staff report. Staff has prepared this matrix, uh, that examines a number of eligible activities that were set forth by the state, and we've provided pros and cons and how each activity would align with the city's existing policies as well as recommended actions. And I couldn't fit the whole matrix into this, uh, slide, so if you could just reference it in the staff report. Um, staff, based on staff analysis of each eligible activity, um, staff recommends opting out of the county's eviction defense program and instead consider using the city's PLHA allocation on establishing a loan or grant program for junior accessory billing units. Um, with the city's allocation of $124,815, up to 12 junior ADUs could be funded with $10,000 to $15,000 grants. Um, the thinking is that this program would be for moderate to low-income seniors. Um, while the county's eviction defense program is timely, it's, uh, the reason why staff isn't recommending it is because it's hard to account for how exactly the city's allocation would benefit the city's residents, uh, specifically. And so, um, a junior ADU grant or loan program is the recommended action because not only would it increase the number of affordable housing, it is consistent with the general plan, uh, plan strategy to reduce impacts on single-family neighborhoods. And, um, as a note.
Ms. Chan, let me, let me, uh, let me stop you right there real quick. I just had a quick question. So you've gotten to the recommendations. You had referred us to Attachment E, which is a matrix that looks like it has five different options. Is that, am I reading that correctly? And are we still on that? Where are we?
Yeah, I believe it's six different eligible activities that are relevant to the city.
Okay, so yeah, so there's six of them. So which of, which is the one that you're recommending? Which of the, of the numbers, number of, uh, options are you talking about right now?
Um, yes.
One, two, three, four? What, which one is it?
Matrix Activity Number Two.
Number two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's the one you're talking about right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we get that slide up?
Sure, let me just bring that back.
Really hard to read.
Yeah.
I've got it on my computer, that's why I can't read that one. It, it, that's why I was wondering where we were. So on the, on the matrix, there's, on the left side, it's eligible activities, and we're talking right now about number, the number two option. I take it that the number one option is the, uh, the eviction program that you referred to earlier, correct?
No, so we didn't put the county's eviction program.
Oh, okay. All right, I just saw it, it's just not recommended, so.
Right.
Okay, so we're not going to go through every one of these options? You're just getting, cutting to the chase, into the?
It would, it would take quite a while if we went through each activity. Um, so, I'm sorry, I'm screening this. Sorry, I'm trying to fix my screen.
It's okay. We're all having trouble with our, uh, technology this evening. No problem.
Okay, um, so, so as, as an alternative to the junior ADU grant program, we also recommend considering, um, Matrix Activity Number, Number, uh, sorry, Number Five. And that's accessibility modifications in lower-income owner occupied housing. So, um, this funding could be used to expand on the city's existing hand worker grant program. Um, it's my understanding that there is consistent interest in this program and there is a waiting list. So any extra funding going towards this program would be helpful. And additionally, there wouldn't be a need to create a new program from scratch. However, this program, I mean, this, the use would, for this money wouldn't help the city with meeting its regional housing needs assessment goals. And, and as a note, uh, I mentioned earlier, this, this funding does fluctuate each year. And, um, whatever is council decides on how to use this allocation, it can be revisited each year. Uh, we would just have to submit an amended plan to the county, uh, for approval. So we're not locked into only using this funding for a certain program for all five years. And, um, so, yes?
Chair, my question?
Yes?
Wait, Vince?
Um, so, uh, so you said that, um, currently we have a lo- large waiting list for the city's Handi Worker Grant Program, which, um, I guess some of that is given to accessibility. Do you know how many people are on the waiting list? And do you know typically how much money we grant, uh, for each applicant?
Uh, yeah.
Tony, if, if you'd like, I can help with that.
Sure, yeah, I was just about to pull up the email. If Scott, if you know the number off the top of your head.
There's about a dozen people or more on the list every year. Um, and then right now we have both a Handy Worker Grant Program and a Loan Program, a Rehab Loan Program. Uh, the Grant Program funds grants, um, that are just for a handy worker to do, um, small projects around the house. Uh, and those cannot exceed more than $10,000. So it'd be very similar to that sort of program.
Mr. Reamer, how many of the Handicare, uh, I don't mean, yeah, Handy Worker Grant Program is related to accessibility?
Not many of them are. They're mostly related to building code issues.
I see, okay. Thank you.
Scott?
Yes?
Um, could any of this funding be shared with another city that is doing affordable housing? And then be able to use a portion of what they're building for our RENA numbers?
Um, Tony, you probably could speak to the Regional Housing Trust Fund, um, on, on that part. Um, council member Sternquist, I'm, I'm not sure about sharing regional housing numbers across jurisdictions generally um, due to some other cities', um, actions. Um, the, the state and SCAG doesn't like that type of, um, thing to happen because it can place an undue amount of low-income people in a, in a jurisdiction. Um, and one of the major goals of housing law is to reduce the over-concentration of low-income housing. So I, I don't think that would be acceptable to SCAG.
Okay, thank you.
Tony, you want to speak to the Regional Housing Trust Fund?
Yeah, so this, there, there is a specific, uh, I guess, um, eligible activity that's listed by the state that we would be able to use this money for Regional Housing Trust Fund. And I know a number of cities in San Gabriel Valley are using their allocation on the trust fund. Um, Temple City is not currently a full member. Um, so that's why we did suggest in the matrix to possibly revisit this as an option for next year's allocation if then Temple City is a member.
Kenny, what's, what's the requirements that are left? I know that Susan Rubio has really tried to push this and, um, the COG is the one that's implementing the funding for the Regional Trust Fund. So what are, what is left for us to meet?
Um, well, basically, to become a full member of the housing trust, I believe it is a $15,000 annual fee plus a $3,000 initial joining fee. Um, I, yes, and, and so I, I believe, Mr. Cook, I think we are going to be presenting this to council within the next few council meetings about, uh, the Regional Housing Trust Fund membership.
Could any of that hundred and some thousand dollars be used to join?
Um, I don't believe, I don't believe so. Uh, I did look into it, but. Uh, I did look into it, but I, I, I don't think so for that one now. As, as a joining fee, no, but I believe administrative fee possibly.
Okay, if you could get a definitive answer on that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, so let me, let me, let me cut the questions off right here. Let me ask, Ms. Chan, are you done with your presentation, or do you still have more to go?
I'm done. I'm open to questions.
All right, so let's, uh, let's open the questions. We'll start with Councilmember Mann. Do you have any, any questions?
Uh, yes, Mayor Chavez, thank you. But, uh, Ms. Chan, for, you mentioned that this, uh, the funding would be available for five years. Do we know if the funding carries over from year to year if a certain allocation is not used?
Um, so I believe there, there is no, uh, you must be, we must use our funding within the five years, whatever we get each year. However, if, if we don't use up a cer-, there, I believe there's a certain amount, uh, four times, sorry, let me look. If we, if we don't use, if there's uncommitted funds, we won't be able to get more funds for the following year, essentially.
Wait, I missed the last word. There's unused funds, or we won't, we won't get the next year?
Yes, if there's unused funds, uh, we will not be able to get new funding for the following year.
So in, in other words, we have to use it up every year by year?
Uh, but there's, there's a, a limit. There's, I believe it's four times, um, uh, the, the initial, hmm, how do I say this? Whatever we use up, for example, if we use, um, 25,000 of the 125,000, then we, we cannot, we cannot, uh, use, we cannot get more funding for the following year.
Okay.
So there's a formula.
All right, that, okay, and, um, I guess my next question, let's see. My next question is, um, in, in the attachment E for option number two, it, it says one of the cons is that it's staff-intensive and would require much council policy. Is, is that related to how we would create the conditions or parameters to allow people to use that funding to create these junior ADUs? Would that be separate from what our current zoning code would allow? Wha- what specifically are we talking about with respect to policy to establish the program?
Uh, Mayor, uh, sorry, Councilmember Chavez, Councilmember Mann, I'll let Scott, uh, answer part of that. But yes, in part, that's true. I, because of it's, it was a balance between what is allowed under state law. Junior ADUs kind of fit within the context of what SCAG would allow as, uh, considered affordable housing units at this time. So we're trying, there, there is a bit of a balance there in that. Scott, uh, Reamer, is there anything that I missed there, or you want to add?
Uh, yeah, just that, um, HCD, the State Housing and Community Development Department, um, will allow cities to add, um, to, for instance, lower fees if property owners will do a covenant on the property to make sure that it stays very low-income. So HCD would be supportive of, would be supportive of a similar issue here where we help fund the JADU as long as a covenant that the person living there is gonna be senior. That, that would be well within HCD's, um, prior, um, ju-, um, comments.
So that would require, I guess, a sep-, if we went that route, would that require essentially a separate discussion on what those parameters would be? Or does HT, HCD already have certain guidelines that we must follow if we go down that route?
Uh, in this case, it would just be, um, it would just be the, making sure that we meet the guidelines for the PLHA grant, um, and probably any LACDA, um, requirements. But, um, we would be putting together guidelines probably similar to what we have for the, um, other CDBG programs.
Okay, and, and, um, my, my next question is, um, is there a reason why it's specifically calling out JADUs and not ADUs?
Yeah, um, we wanted to try and come up with something that would as closely match the council's desire to, um, protect single-family neighborhoods as much as possible. Since JADUs have to be within the existing structure, we felt that most conformed with your desire. Um, but we could allow for ADUs. The downside is that someone then could take the money and build a larger, like, add-on to the house or build a whole nother structure. The other benefit of doing JADUs is that they're so much cheaper. Since the structure's already there and you're only doing a little bit of remodeling work, we can fund more of them.
Okay, that makes sense. And, uh, and, and my last question is, um, in, also in Attachment E, um, there's a part that says the city would need to hire a consultant to monitor affordability covenants. Uh, would that be covered under the PLHA funding? Or is that a separate source of money that we would have to pull to hire a consultant?
Tini, the grant does allow us to use some amount of the money for administration. Is that right?
Yes, uh, o- only 5% of the 124,000, so that's about, uh, 6,000, a little more than $6,000.
So, okay.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be an excessive amount of work per se, just enough for us to make sure, Mr. Reamers is pointing out, Ms. Chan's pointing out, to ensure the, to, to have another set of eyes on the covenants to make sure that those covenants meet when, uh, HCD and others either strengthen their requirements on what ADUs are or just, just the validity of those covenants, just that there's another pair of eyes on it. It's not as though they're administering the whole function that it is just another set of eyes. I think it could be potentially a city attorney's office taking a look at some of that as well, depending on the skill set.
Okay, so if, I, I guess, I'm, I'm interpreting that as, that's not really a large cost burden?
No, and, and, no, I don't think it's gonna be a large cost burden.
Okay, okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, Councilmember Sternquist, any additional questions at this time?
I don't have any other questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscara, any questions?
And if I heard correctly, that same 124,000 could be used for a handyman program as opposed to, to, uh, the, uh, ADU program. Is that correct?
Um, only if it is, uh, based for use for accessibility modifications.
Say again?
Only if, um, o- only if it is the handy worker, the specific use is for accessibility modification to the house.
And are those like ramps or ramps, things like that, or, or?
Walk-in tubs?
Right, typically what we see are ramps, or we see modifications to bathrooms to make them more disabled-friendly.
I, I don't know. We're talking about the, the residents of, of the existing residents and the older ones usually of this city. I would much rather see the, uh, money used for a handyman program. And, and that 124,000 could get set up very quickly.
Well, hold, hold that thought, because we're gonna come back to final comments in a little bit. Any other questions?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mayor Protem, you, any questions at this time?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have a question on the, the first recommendation, which is, uh, producing, uh, junior ADUs. Um, in the, uh, matrix, uh, uh, Attachment E, it talks about 100%, 120% AMI or 100% 50, 150% AMI. Um, uh, I guess that stands for, uh, area medium income. Do you know what that is for Temple City up here?
Uh, I, I can pull that up for you, Councilmember Yu, if you give me a few minutes.
Okay.
Okay, that was one of my questions, is what the heck does AMI mean?
Sure, so, uh, the, the Mayor pretends correct. It's the area median income generally not drilled down to the level of just the city. It's a, a regional number. Um, but Mr. Reamers will get that for you, uh, in, in a moment.
Uh, I, I do have the numbers. Um, it'd just be easier to show you the table. It is an attachment to the RENA staff report. But, uh, 80 to 120% of the AMI is considered moderate income. And for a family of two, that would be a, a household that's making $61,000. That's the medium. Moderate income for a family of two would be $74,000.
Okay, that corresponds to 120, 150% that in your table.
Yes.
So the point, I guess, that, that, the question I have is that, so we are trying to create, uh, junior, uh, ADU to he- help folks that are making 60 to 70,000 dollars, making it easy for them to move into Temple City. I guess that, that's what we're really talking about here.
Yes, that, that much or less, yes.
Yeah, okay. I just want to understand. Thank you, Ms. Reamer.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just have a quick question, uh, on the number two option. So the money that would be used to actually build the units, correct? It's, uh, uh, and I know this is related to our next discussion on RENA, which we're going to talk about the amazing, uh, numbers that the state is giving us as far as new units and additional units. But, uh, but the money will actually be used to build these junior ADUs. But it, and I know maybe this is, uh, off-topic, but it is related to the next discussion. Right now, it's, it's my understanding the state is not requiring us to build anything. Uh, but, uh, certainly that could happen down the road sometime.
That, that is correct.
That's right?
Yes.
Okay, so, so we're actually, number two is actually asking us to build something that we're not even required to do at this time, but of course, it's a choice, um, way of using our money for that.
That, that is correct. That is correct. Uh, we do provide annual reports to HCD to demonstrate whether affordable housing is being constructed. The other benefit is that if, if the state sees that affordable units are being constructed, then we can count that towards, um, the capacity. Uh, we can't count, we can't count ADUs or JADUs if we don't show that there's a demand for them, that they're not getting built.
Okay, all right. Um, but we get credit if we just show there's a demand. We don't actually have to build them, right?
Uh, yes, but the way of demonstrating demand is, is by construction.
Okay. Just trying to get this clear in my head here. All right. Well, we'll have a better discussion perhaps. We're gonna have a better discussion in the next go-around, I think, on that. Okay, all right, so, uh, I'm gonna ask, uh, our city clerk. Oh, yes, go ahead, Vince.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have a follow-up question to one of your questions.
Okay, go ahead.
So you said we're not, we don't need to build them, but what, but I also heard, it, it just want to make, make sure I heard the right thing. Also heard that if the money we set aside and then we don't use it, i- it would evaporate. It cannot carry over. Am I correct?
Nor, nor would we get any more after that.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I think, all right.
Hold on, let's, let's let him answer.
If we set aside money to build, um, uh, uh, junior ADUs and know there are no takers, then the money would evaporate, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Um, let me open up public comment. I'll ask the, uh, our city clerk if there are any public comment emails on this matter.
No, Mayor, there are no email public comments.
Okay, and if you'll unmute the microphones of anybody who's on the line at this time wishes to comment, uh, please do so. Hearing none, I will close public comment. And we will now move on to our final council questions slash comments. Uh, why don't we go ahead and start with Mayor Protem Yu first?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, um, I, um, following some of the, uh, actually comments made by, uh, the rest of the council member and yourself, um, I, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Viscara's, um, comment earlier. That is, that we've been having a lot of issues with ADUs to begin with. We see a lot of ADUs coming, whether or not we, and I really don't think ADUs really need a lot of encouragement. Uh, they are coming, they're helping our RENA numbers, no matter what. Uh, and, and, and that's the reason I asked earlier, uh, about the, uh, handy worker program. We already have a long list. Um, the only thing that we just need to help, wherever applying, to make it more accessible, accessibility-centric. Um, and I think that's a better program, uh, than helping to create more, um, junior ADUs.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Viscara, any little final comments?
No, I think, uh, Councilmember Yu said it all.
Okay. Councilmember Sternquist, any final comments?
Um, and just that, uh, the city of Alhambra has a accessibility grant program, and I don't know what funding they use, but they would be a good city to reach out to and see how that's implemented. I love that idea about, um, making houses more accessible, especially, um, in our city where we have multifamily generations living together in one house. So I'd like to see that, um, like, um, Councilmember Yu said.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Mann, final comments?
Yeah, I, I think I, I generally agree that the funds would probably be better used to, um, supplement the, I guess, what we used to fund with the CDBG program. Um, I know this one's more restrictive. Um, I, I guess one question I had is, does the PLHA application force us to only adhere to one program? Or can we say, since we really don't know what the, the actual demand is for either one, is there an option that allows us to say, well, we can use it for both?
Uh, yes, we can determine a certain percentage can go to this program, a certain percentage can go to something else, another eligible activity.
Oh, so we have to assign percentages?
Yes, yes.
Oh, that, that's, that's a prob-, that's problematic.
Yeah.
Okay, um, then, then I, I take that back. I, I thought maybe there would be some flexibility where, well, if, let's say hypothetically, there, I mean, like, direct, uh, like, uh, Mr. Reamers was, was saying ear- earlier, um, I think a, a question that Mayor Protem Yu answered, uh, asked was, you know, how many of the handyman programs are related to accessibility? And he said most of them are building code issues. So if there's low demand on that end, um, the, 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 I mean, I don't like ADUs as much as anyone else here, but, um, if it does, I guess the part that jumps out at me is the affordability covenant that's required as part of it. And I don't think we as a city have really done much in, in that area. And this is kind of a, I mean, it's a small, it's a small effort, but I, I think it still counts for, counts better than, than nothing. I think the affordability portion actually sticks out for me for, for the JADU thing. So ideally, I, I would like there to be some flexibility, um, but if there isn't, uh, then I would agree with what the rest of the council said and stick with the, um, the handyman program.
William, I'm wondering if there, we don't know because we've never had that program, but I will say that the city of Alhambra, that, um, number is huge. And at the time when I looked into it for my mom, um, actually, it was a much longer list than the regular handyman program list.
Okay, well, I, I, I hope you're, I hope you're right, because I, I think, in general, I think I agree. That's a better use of, of the funds.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so my last comments on this, when I first took a look at this report, uh, what stood- what stood out for me, especially considering what we're going to discuss next, and that is the RENA allocation that we have to be concerned with. And the option number two, of course, addresses that, or at least helps us to reach those unreachable numbers, I should say. But again, I'm a little concerned about the conditions on it. I think these junior ADUs and ADUs are going to continue regardless of what we do. That seems to be the trend anyway in our city. And I think, based on that, I think that it's not going to really mean that much as far as increasing or helping our RENA numbers. And of the two recommendations, I would also probably favor the accessibility issues and helping with that Handy Worker Grant Program, so that I think we get a little bit, hopefully, more bang for our buck. And lastly, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I heard that even if we do that this year, we can always change it next year to something else. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, so we have some flexibility depending on what actually is maybe more of a priority from year to year. So I think that at least gives us some comfort room there as well. So, okay. With that, I will then, unless there are any further questions, I will go ahead and entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question slash comment.
Go ahead.
I, the way I understand the Handy Worker Program right now is open to all kinds of home remodeling and building code improvements, but I don't think we ever really go out and truly advertise and offer help, especially like folks that want to increase accessibility. We need some help in understanding how best to do it. And I thought that, I was wondering, and maybe staff can help answer, if we have a more focused program, a focused campaign to advertise the availability of this of accessibility Handy Worker Program, then I was wondering if staff thinks there'll be more people applying, would apply for the grants.
Can I make a comment, Vince?
Oh, absolutely. I'm done. Thank you.
You have to ask me. You don't ask Vince.
Mr. Mayor, may I comment on Councilmember Yu's comment?
Of course you may. Go ahead.
I remember we had quite a bit of experience with the Handy Man program in the past. And so we had some pretty good guidelines based on a need more than anything else. And often it was things like, you know, somebody's, some senior sink would be cavied, and they didn't have the money to fix it. Or there was a requirement based on need, and I think the guidelines are probably still there. So I think there's a way to do it where people aren't just going after it for remodel funding, but rather to fix something that they can't do.
Well, I think you make a good point, and there's no question that I think we should take a look at our Handy, our Handy Worker Grant Program. But again, we have to keep in mind that if we allocate this money to that program, the state requires certain conditions as well, and that is accessibility modifications. But at the same time, I think we have an aging community that could well use some of these things if they knew that they were available. And I think that's what maybe the direction we need to go in, depending on our decision tonight. Mr. Cook, go ahead.
And also, thank you, Mayor Chavez, and also to Mayor Protem and Councilmember Viscara's points. We also have a new built-in outreach mechanism, both with our senior community and with the institutions, with our Senior Master Plan Subcommittee as well. So we'll be able to utilize those and really start to get out the word to the community and have those tie-ins. Mr. Matsumoto is working with the commission, with the committee as well to do more outreach, so we know who our senior population is and maybe what some of their needs are as well. So while we may not know the exact demand right now, we are actually institutionalizing some mechanisms in which to gauge that demand a bit better and which we'll utilize in this process.
Okay, thank you for that information. Okay, so unless there are any further comments or questions, we'll go ahead and go with the motion. Anybody like to propose one?
I would move that we go with the alternative to fund accessibility modifications of lower-income owner-occupied housing.
Second.
Okay. And of course, that, just so we're clear, that includes adopting Resolution Number 205492.
Yeah, I couldn't jump from there to that, so that.
Okay, no problem. Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. Unless there's any objection, Madam Clerk, could you take role, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Yeah.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, before we move on to item number B, I've got nine thirty-five. We've been going strong for two hours. Why don't we take about a ten-minute break, and we'll come back and we'll finish up the rest of this agenda? So ten minutes, and we'll see you right back here. So we're back on. We're now moving on to item B, Temple City's Sixth Cycle Regional Housing Needs Assessment, which is known as the RENA allocation. So I will, let's see, Mr. City Manager, are you gonna go first, or is Director Remer gonna go first?
I will, I will start off, and I'll go to Director Remers after that. Mayor, Mayor, members of the council, thank you for allowing us to have this discussion tonight. Mr. Remers and also working with Mr. Murphy to put together a very comprehensive review. And we tell you this, we're having kind of a two-pronged discussion, and I can't go forward to connect the two, but we'll also be talking about the specific plan as well. And, but everything is surrounding housing. And as you know, and Mr. Remers will be coming back in a couple of meetings too, our housing element is something that's due, that he'll mention in just a few moments as well. In the packet that's presented to you, Mr. Remers also sent two, I think, very cogent and thoughtful letters to, and respectful letters to SCAG to kind of point out the deficiencies of why, why these RENA numbers really do not make a whole lot of sense from a policy perspective to Temple City. And Mr. Remers will go over that a little bit, and he'll also go over what the real challenges are to an appeal and what that all means. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Remers.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, and everyone else that's joining us tonight. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect.
Fantastic. So yes, I'm gonna speak tonight about the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. This is something that happens every eight years, and we're in the sixth cycle of RENA. The purpose of RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, is to provide sufficient capacity for housing. Again, it's just to demonstrate that there is sufficient capacity to build housing. And as we go through, we're gonna be talking about a lot of acronyms that are going about and a lot of pieces of jargon, and I'll do my best to go ahead and explain that as best as I can. The process of RENA is intricate in and of itself. It's really two different things going on at the same time. And the first part of the process is determining how many housing units SCAG should get, the Southern California Association of Governments, which is a governmental body that oversees Ventura County, LA County, Orange County, Riverside County, San Bernardino County. And so it's really determining how many housing units SCAG should receive. So HCD starts off by drafting a regional number for SCAG. SCAG then looks at those numbers, provides some draft numbers to the, demonstrates those draft numbers to each of its local jurisdictions, so that we can all see how many housing units SCAG is going to have, and we can provide comments to HCD. HCD reviews SCAG's comments and any local jurisdiction comments, and then provides a final number to SCAG. And we've been through that part of the process already. SCAG has received its final numbers. While that's all happening, while SCAG is getting, is finding out what its final number will be, they go through a separate process to determine how to take that number and divide it between each of its member jurisdictions, which include all the counties and cities in its region. So it starts off by coming up with a methodology to have how to distribute those. It shows us what that methodology would look like and how it might look like for each jurisdiction. And then at that point, each of the jurisdictions can provide letters to SCAG about the methodology. And we have been through that part of the process. Staff has given, sent two letters to SCAG about that methodology that they drafted. SCAG has reviewed those methodologies and has provided a final methodology to HCD, and HCD has approved that methodology. So we now have a final number and a final methodology, and SCAG has put the final numbers through the methodology and has given us our allocation. So what's in that methodology? How do they distribute those numbers? So as they're distributing the numbers, they're looking at past household growth. They're looking at how close jobs are to housing. They're looking at where transit service is high. And then when they take that number and divide it into different types of housing, meaning different income levels, they look at social equity. And one of the pieces of housing law right now is that they don't want to have an over-concentration of low-income housing in certain areas. So that's a big piece of how those numbers are divided. And they look at education, they look at low-income jobs, whether they're available, and other resources when they start dividing these numbers up. So we have our final, well, we have a draft, it's like a final draft of the regional housing allocation for Temple City. It, total number of units that they want us to have capacity for over the next eight years is two thousand one hundred eighty-two. That number is then divided up into different income categories. And so you can see on the left side of your screen that they want us to have a capacity for six hundred and twenty-eight very low-income housing units. If you compare that over the last, at the cycle, we only had six hundred and three housing units allocated to Temple City. So the number has more than tripled since the last cycle. Now, we have to remember that the last cycle was during the Great Recession, and during that point in time, there were a lot of vacant housing units. So a lot, so the SCAG region received an abnormally low number in the fifth cycle. But even comparing it to the fourth cycle, it's double the number of the fifth cycle, the fourth cycle. The other thing to look at too is the effect social equity law is playing in here in that the very low income is making up a much larger percentage of the total. So now we have twenty-nine percent of the housing units that we're going to have to demonstrate capacity for will have to be very low income, when in the past it was only, I think, twelve percent. So the big question that we'll have to study is how we can demonstrate capacity to meet that two thousand one hundred eighty-two number and all these different income levels. And we do that by looking at two things. One is a site inventory, and the second, we can also look at is the construction of accessory dwelling units. So this is the sites inventory from our last housing element. It's both a map and a table. The map demonstrates where there is capacity to build housing units. And then the table breaks that down and provides additional information to the, provides additional information about each of these sites. So important to know is that we can't assume complete build-out of every parcel, and that we can't assume that every parcel is going to be built out to its maximum density. So even if something's zoned sixteen units per acre, if most projects are only getting built out to twelve units per acre, then we can probably only forecast twelve units per acre into the, acres into the future. The table will look at things such as the existing floor area ratio versus the allowed floor area ratio, the age of the buildings, the building condition, when the property was last sold, any lease terms, and whether the property owner has an interest in developing the site. In terms of accessory dwelling units, we can use ADUs to meet our RENA allocation, but we'd have to demonstrate, that has to be based in reality. So we can't just say, well, every housing, every single-family parcel is gonna have an ADU, and therefore we'll meet the allocation. We have to probably go through and say, on average, we build about fifty ADUs per year, and so we would just take that and multiply it times eight, and that would be how many ADUs we could reasonably project into the future. The other thing is, the HCD will want us to demonstrate or do a study on how affordable are the rents for those ADUs? If all of our ADUs are being rented at market rate, then we may not be able to count them for RENA. One of the primary sources we're expecting to be used in the sites inventory is the Crossroad Specific Plan. In the Crossroad Specific, in the general plan, which was approved by the council just a few years ago, the goal was to focus new growth away from our single-family zones and focus them into this commercial zone. And because we demonstrated that there could be some benefits along with that growth. So we're expecting that the sites inventory would really focus on growth in the Crossroad Specific Plan. The good news is, is that there's a capacity of up to one thousand eight hundred thirty-seven housing units in the Crossroad Specific Plan. However, there may be some factors that limit our ability to count every site or to count even maximum development at all the sites. There is another state law that we should cover, and that's a no-net-loss provision. And what that says is that the city should not lose any of the capacity that's demonstrated in its site inventory. We need to continue to provide sufficient inventory. So for, if the city approved a development with less density on a site, we either have to demonstrate that there was sufficient sites in the site inventory to make up for that, so we might want to have a site inventory that exceeds the two thousand number in case we end up approving projects that are less than the allowed density. The other alternative is to have, if sufficient sites do not exist, then we would have to potentially upzone additional sites to provide that sufficiency. In our last housing element, which covered the years of 2014 to 2020, we did provide the sites inventory, but that now needs to be updated based on these new RENA numbers. So we will be doing a new site inventory. The housing element also contains a section about what are the constraints to housing and what is the city doing right now in terms of providing affordable housing. And then it will include some implementation measures. In the previous housing element, one of the implementation measures, for instance, was to study an inclusionary housing ordinance, to upzone, well, to provide a minimum density requirement in the R3 zone and so forth. The city is currently in the process of hiring a consultant to help us with our housing element, and we're hoping to bring that to you, that consultant contract in November. So that RENA allocation that I showed you on previous slides can be appealed. And that's the, that's the request that we're bringing before you tonight. The appeal argument has to be based on certain things. It just can't be based on our need or our desire. So it has to be based on local planning factors and information that affirmatively further fair housing. We have to demonstrate that, or we have to demonstrate that the final methodology was not instituted correctly, or there's been some change in circumstances. So for instance, if the vacancy rates increased dramatically over the last six months or since the data was collected, we could demonstrate that. RENA appeals are very rare, successful ones, that is. Last, in the last cycle, thirteen jurisdictions appealed their RENA allocation, and none of the appeals were successful. Some possible arguments we might be able to make is that the city's, is already has a very low number of jobs, and so providing additional housing in the city would not help with the jobs-housing balance. We could try and demonstrate that there is not sufficient suitable land and that there is not a significant amount of public transit. We don't have a transit priority. And that there is not a significant amount of public transit. We don't have a transit priority area such as Arcadia with a light rail station or Amani with a bus station. So we could demonstrate that this is not a good place to provide additional housing. An appeal must further the objectives of RENA law. So somebody could not construe this as something that's trying to underwrite the RENA allocation or the RENA law. And we have to support SCAG's sustainable community strategy. So you can see why it's very difficult to win an appeal. The process for the appeals is we have to submit our appeal by October 26th if the council directs us to do so. Then SCAG reviews those for about two months. And then between December and January, SCAG will have appeal hearings at which we'll speak and provide testimony. And then SCAG will provide its determination on the appeal in mid-January. And then by the beginning of February, SCAG will let us know if any of the appeals were successful. And if successful, they will redistribute those additional housing units to other jurisdictions. And then we will receive our final RENA allocation. So with that, we're asking the city council to request us to direct, to direct us to formulate and file an appeal with SCAG on our Temple City's sixth cycle RENA allocation. So if you have any questions, I'm available.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and start with council questions? Councilmember Mann, are there any questions?
Yeah, I do. Not even sure where to begin. So I mean, it seems, so you're, you're asking council to recommend to direct you to file an appeal. But I guess you're, you're also mentioning that there's been no successful appeals before. So I, I guess are we, is there anything unique this time around that would lead us to believe that we would somehow be successful? Or is that just, we just have no way of determining that at this point?
Yeah, it, the, the rules for appeal have been made even more difficult now in the sixth cycle. However, we, we think it may be beneficial to try for an appeal and see what happens. There's no cost. Rather, except for legal fees. But there's no cost to the city. There's no fee that has to be paid to SCAG to file an appeal. So we thought you may be interested in filing appeal and see what happens.
Okay. Councilman Mann, this is Greg.
Yeah.
Couple, couple reasons and, and without getting into too much detail on them, I can let you know that the city of Pasadena has filed an appeal. This, or has directed staff to file an appeal. The city of Alhambra has directed staff to file an appeal. Several cities, Orange County are directing their staffs to file appeals. And a number of other cities in our region and across the SCAG region are going to be taking this matter up this week and next. One reason to file an appeal, sort of a practical reason, given the extremely high numbers that everyone has received this time around, is to indicate that these numbers are going to be very difficult for the city of Temple City to reach. As long as we can file an appeal on legitimate grounds and we're not just taking this as a chance to complain, I think that one is appropriate because it will make that indication to SCAG that the 2,000 plus units are going to be a real problem for Temple City. So if somehow one of the other jurisdictions is successful, Temple City should not be reallocated any of the units that are taken away from that successful appellate. That alone is, is good reason to, to appeal. And as Mr. Reamer said, there are some grounds, it's going to take some time to work them up. As the mayor knows, you know, you, you get the go ahead to, to file, in this case, an appeal, but to, but to take a legal action. And then you're going to want to work out your arguments. So we don't have the arguments in detail right now. We didn't want to spend legal time on it or staff time on it until we were sure that the council was okay with it. But if you are, by acting tonight, we would have 20 days to file, which is plenty of time to, to put together good, strong arguments that likely will fail based on past history, but that will at least position Temple City and let SCAG know Temple City is not interested in receiving any more units.
Okay. No, thank, thank you. I appreciate that response.
Thank you, sir.
I, my other question is, in, in the attachments to the staff report, there's two letters that were sent last year. One to the RENA Subcommittee and one to the SCAG Regional Council. Which body hears the appeal and makes the decision on the appeal? Is it one of those? Or do we know?
I, I believe it's a Subcommittee that hears the item for, and it's a specific Subcommittee that's, that's just on the RENA allocation.
Okay. So it's not the RENA Subcommittee that you wrote the letter to?
I believe so.
Okay. So it's, it's a different Subcommittee than that one.
I believe so, yes. I think it's a separate appeals Subcommittee.
I see.
Okay.
It would appear that, it would appear that your point is, with the same body, why bother? Because they've already seen our arguments.
That was one, that was one.
I think you got, I think you got a valid point there. So.
But I guess my other, my other point was I, I know the chair. So.
Maybe you can put a good word in for us then.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's why I asked. So if, if we find out, we could talk about that later. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Why don't we go to Councilmember Viscar? Any questions at this time?
There we go. No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist, any questions?
Um, just a comment. Last week I participated in a two hour SCAG listening webinar. And it was for the newly elected president of SCAG, Rex, and I cannot think of his last name right now. But the number one, and I participated as Chair of Foothill Transit. He wanted to get to know more about Foothill Transit and what we're doing with COVID-19 in transportation. But the other people that were on the call that were representing cities, the RENA numbers was definitely a very hot topic. So we're not alone.
Sure we're not. Okay. Mayor Procham, you, any questions? Vince?
I think you're muted, sir.
Sorry. And, and yeah, a couple of questions. In the last cycle, we have 603 units allocated to us. Do we have a record of how many of the 603 units we managed to reduce?
Yes, we do. Go ahead. So the, we have to do an annual report to HCD on our, our progress towards meeting that. We've met the, we're nearly to the total 603. But our difficulty is actually getting the affordable units. So that, that's where we cannot demonstrate sufficient capacity or sufficient.
Okay, I see, I see. And, and the second is a more of a general question. Really, regardless where the 600, 2,000, where, I think to the mayor's point before, I, I think isn't what HCD is really looking for us to implement policy, not actively engaging in developing these units. Right?
That, that is correct. The RENA, we have to demonstrate capacity. Yes.
But except your comment about the, our specific, of the crossroad specific plan, to get to 2,000 units kind of be pretty impossible, apart from the crossroad specific plan. But I mean, for us to even get there, I mean, we already done everything we could. I mean, to add another 2,000 unit, I, I don't know how we can even get there.
Well, yeah, sorry.
No, go ahead.
It, it, it may be, it may be possible in this cycle when we look at all the multifamily properties in the city. It may be possible when we combine that with the ADUs and the crossroad specific plan. We may just squeeze by in this sixth cycle. My, one of my concerns with the housing element is how we will demonstrate capacity to hit the very low income, the 628 number. But if, if, if we get by the sixth cycle without making dramatic changes to the zoning code and the general plan, the next cycle will, will definitely require some major changes to land uses.
Would they be something such as requiring certain low income level housing in every multifamily development regardless where they want or not? I mean, is that such, such kind of a requirement?
That, so what most cities would do if they wanted to move in that direction is they would establish what's called an inclusionary housing ordinance, which says you have to provide a certain percentage of the housing in a development to an afford, at an affordable rate, or you pay a fee and the city uses that fee to fund affordable housing. That's something that some of the jurisdictions around us have. The benefit of that is we can then demonstrate that we have programs to provide affordable housing. The downside is that it provides another constraint to building housing because it increases the cost of housing. So we're still waiting to see whether HCD is still supportive of inclusionary housing ordinance or whether they see them as constraints to actual construction.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of questions. So in discussing the appeal, I, it seemed obviously staff believes that we should file an appeal. I think we have a good template for our arguments based on Mr. Reamer's letters. I think he raises some really good arguments and good questions. I mean, it, it amazes me that when I hear words like, you only have to have the capacity to build housing. But how does that, how does that coincide with cities who are basically built out like us? I mean, it just makes no sense to me. But again, a lot of what the state does makes no sense to me. My question is any, is there any legal recourse after the appeal to RENA? Greg, do you know? I mean, is there, is there, is that it? Is that, is that like this US Supreme Court making their decision on something? Or, or is anybody, to your knowledge, has anybody ever taken it any further?
Well, sir, it's, you know, you, as, as a law professor would say, anybody can sue anyone at any time. The chance of success is extraordinarily small. SCAG will have been operating based on a formula that they derived from their member groups and that was blessed by HCD. HCD is operating pursuant to powers given it by the state of California. So the debt, the amount of deference to the government agency in this case would be tremendously large. Could you file? You, you could. I, I just don't know.
Well, let me ask you this. Have you ever heard of anybody doing that? Have you ever?
I have not heard of anyone.
Okay, yeah. I agree with you. I only asked the question because I, I agree that likelihood of, of prevailing after such a, such a decision are very slammed, I think. You're exactly right, but I don't know whether it's ever been done or not.
No.
Also, so what, what are we looking at as far as costs involved in this appeal? I know that there is no fee to file the appeal. We're just talking about apparently so far staff time and attorney time. I think there was a, I had discussed earlier with our city manager, the, the possibility. I know that there are consultants out there that maybe are, are used in these situations. However, that can be a little cost prohibitive. Do we have any estimate on what the bottom line cost on appealing is going to be in this case?
At the appeal that, that Mr. Reimers and Mr. Murphy talked about, I figure it's a few thousand dollars worth of attorney time to do that. But I, I leave that to Mr. Murphy to kind of pin that down just a little bit further. But it would be staff and attorney time at this point.
Yeah, I honestly, Mr. Reimers has the outline. It, it's a good one. You have it in front of you. So what we would do is have professional staff start it. And then legal would run through it, add legal argument to it. I, I cannot imagine we're looking at 10 hours of legal time. I, I just can't imagine it. So. You know.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think we have a good template already there for us. It makes a lot of sense. And I think if we can use that for the most part and then just kind of expand from there. Just one last question. I think it was brought up around the, I think Vince brought this up about the crossroad specific plan and, and how we use that area for, for a great deal of meeting our, our numbers last time. But correct me if I'm, I'm, I'm wrong, but if we use that and then it turns out that, that, that we're not going to be able to use, the developer comes in and doesn't, doesn't use that for the housing that we committed to, then, then we have to find somewhere else to put it, correct? I mean, it just doesn't go away, obviously.
Scott had mentioned that. I'll, I'll defer to him, but, but that's absolutely right. If you don't get the units built on a site that you identified, then you have to be able to find space for them somewhere else.
So I leave it harder.
Yes, yes, you're right.
Okay, okay. All right. All right. So with that, I'm going to open a public comment. I'll ask the city clerk if there are any email public comments on this matter.
No, mayor, there are no email public comments and there are no callers.
Okay, thank you. So I will close public comments. And I will then turn to council for any final comments and we'll start with Councilmember Mann.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Chavez. Yeah, I appreciate Mr. Reimers and all the, the outline of all the reasons for the appeal. I think it pretty much encompasses and directly reflects council policy for, for many years, stemming from the general plan update and the crossroad specific plan. So I, I support staff's recommendation to move forward with appeal, although I think I don't really share the, the optimism that it's going to make much of a difference, but perhaps like Mr. Murphy had said, if this snowballs and there's enough jurisdictions filing the appeal, maybe, maybe you've reached some critical mass where change that is actually made. Because it seems like at this point, we don't really know if there's a, a lot of cities appealing. I mean, I guess we'll find out soon, right? The deadline's coming up. So I think, I guess I'd be interested to see if there's any updates at maybe one of our next meetings to see what that total number of appeals has been filed in, in the entire SCAG region. And then I think Director Reimers pointed out, he kind of confirmed one of my suspicions was you, this inclusionary housing element that you insert and you try to make developers include that as part of it. That seems like there's, there's some market forces. There's ultimately, there's a business decision that has to be made by whoever is developing the site as to whether or not that makes sense, right? Does that make it harder to develop? Probably if it comes, if we're just, if we're stripping away all emotion and policy, that, that's what it seems like it would be. And like Mayor Chavez mentioned, if they don't do it, it pushes somewhere else. So the, the problem is never really resolved. And you know, the crossroad specific plan is really the only place in all of Temple City where we can kind of focus that. And that, that's, that's why we, we did that in the general plan. So I don't know. It'll, it'll be interesting to see how this plays out. So, so I just, I just appreciate the information. It was very well put together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sternquist? Any final comments?
Just that I support the appeal.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Viscara?
Yeah, I just, I have a great feeling of, of, of being boxed in and really with very few alternatives. So we may as well push ahead and go ahead with the appeal.
Thank you. Mayor Procham, you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I too would support the appeal even though chances are of getting any relief is probably pretty slim. But I also wanted to make a, a more of a rhetorical question. So answer if you, if you want that, Mr. Reimer and Mr. Murphy. You know, in, in all development, we have to mediate the, the California Environmental Quality Act. We have to make a CEQA finding of that. A big part is like a, a traffic congestion and a bunch of other things, impact of water, quality of life and so on and so forth. So I understand the, the, the Reno, Reno number, because it doesn't result in development directly, may not need to meet any CEQA threshold. But I was just wondering, I mean, how can one require cities to build so many units without any, making any kind of a CEQA finding? Anyway, those are my, my, you don't have to answer.
I, I, I think I can answer that. They, they don't know because who knows? I mean, it's like, they, who knows why we even got to this point? That's the thing that, that is crazy. But at any rate, you know, this whole thing reminds me of when I first started practicing law. And I sat on a, a panel that agreed to do appeals for criminal defendants who were, who are found guilty. And under the law, they have a right to a free appeal. And so we would represent these, these clients on their appeal. 99% of those cases had no chance of winning. Okay? And yet they appealed because, you know, why not? And I, I kind of feel that way here. It's like, hey, so you know, it's not, it's free. It's not free. We're going to do pay, we're going to pay some money. But I think that outweighs or that pain what we, we're going to pay at least to get to, to the, through the appellate process. I think is out, you know, it's, it's better. I think the risk outweighs that. So not the risk, but the possibility perhaps of, of making a difference outweighs that, that, that money. So I think I, I agree with my colleagues. I think doing an appeal, I mean, like I said, you know, we have a good template and I appreciate Director Reimers for, for the work he's done so far. I think, I think he's hit it on the nail for, with most of these things. They certainly make a whole lot of sense to me. But you know, I wish I'm not the one making the decision. So hopefully they'll hear it. I, I have a funny feeling that we're going to see a lot more appeals than we did with the last go around. Only because of the great increase in numbers. I think most cities really are going to be like us. You really have no choice. They put you kind of into a corner to, to, to file an appeal. So who knows? Maybe it'll be a, a different outcome. So, and one real quick question. Do we, we see what our, ours went from 603 to 2182. Is that, are, are there cities in the same boat? Are they all different? I mean, did they all go up, you know, that much or some did, some didn't? Do we have, do we know any of that information?
Yes, we, we can provide you some of what the other surrounding cities have received. A lot of cities saw a large jump, some not as quite as large as ours. But a lot of the cities are shell shocked with the numbers.
Yeah, I can imagine. Yeah, I could imagine. Okay. All right. So with that said, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Go ahead. Let me, let me, let me let councilmember Sternquist make the motion. Vince, if you don't mind, she has started. Go ahead.
I'll make a, a motion to move forward with the appeal as stated in the staff report.
Okay. Do we have a second?
One second.
Thank you. All right. Unless there's any objection, I'll go ahead and ask for roll call.
Yes, mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Procham, you?
Yep.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay. We will now move on to item 11, update from city manager. Brian, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez and members of the council. Considering the late evening, I'll be short, but tonight, tomorrow, next meeting and the meeting after is very much about land use and housing. So this is a preview and a great presentation by staff across the board. But the next meeting will also be about a review of the specific plan and also the moratorium as well and some of the potential impacts. So this, we're trying to succinctly as we can bring these items to you so that you can understand and we can gauge your policy perspective and where you are from a policy standpoint so that we as staff are consistent with the policy that you're looking to achieve. Two quick things as well. Last council meeting, I was asked, we were, staff was asked about the COVID cases and the trend of COVID cases throughout Temple City. Staff looked at the numbers and we also contacted our, our contacts within the LA County Public Health Department. They did not see any anomalies or anything that they were concerned about that was trending specifically in Temple City that we need to be alarmed about. The one area that always, that has trended throughout Southern California is nursing homes and assisted living homes. That trend seemed to have stabilized over the summer and has apparently stabilized within our assisted housing units and convalescent homes as well. A, a similar trend that's happening throughout, throughout the county. That was the only thing that was kind of pointed out that they, but they see a consistency in the downward trend and stabilizing of the COVID cases and unfortunately, COVID deaths that are happening in those facilities. Lastly, Las Tunas is prepped, ready to go. Nighttime work will be starting at the end of this week and hopefully done very quickly. Again, any concerns? We've done significant social media outreach, flyers to the neighborhood. A few, a few adjustments that we've made accordingly, but I think we should be in pretty good shape and we'll have some new pavement on Las Tunas. Now that's it for my report, sir.
Okay, thank you. Update from city attorney?
Nothing else tonight, sir. The Reno is our, our big legal issue.
Okay, thank you. Item number 13, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any reports? Okay, hearing none. Don't believe we've had any committee meetings. We will now move on to item number 14, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. I'll begin with councilmember Mann.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez. I'll, I'll keep it short. Just, you know, we, we used to have right around this time is the mid autumn festival. And in, in the past years before COVID, we had a chance to work with Rural Journal to host, co-host with them up here. And so obviously with COVID, that wasn't going to happen this year. But for, for those who do celebrate, I, I want to wish everyone a happy mid autumn festival. And hopefully next year is different. I mean, just like a lot of our other activities and then primarily our Parks and Rec programs and summer concerts, et cetera, all that has changed. Nevertheless, these things we should still celebrate to try to keep a sense of normalcy. And I just want to wish everyone to stay safe. Hopefully these county regional numbers for COVID cases are trending in a good direction for everyone. And we've seen some, seen the county take some measures and reopen certain facilities. So I'd be interested to, I guess just a general comment for maybe our city manager. See how those kind of openings go citywide and if we run into any issues related to that. To let us know. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
Um, yes, just want to remind everyone about tipping and tossing still water. LA County had its first West Nile virus case death. And it was a young gentleman who's fairly young, 65. I believe he was an actor. His family posted it. And yeah, so just be mindful that the very hot weather is a breeding ground for mosquitoes. And then just one other question. I've had a couple of comments addressed to me on Facebook sharing that the dive restaurant is not open for dining, but that the sign says that it is. And that they were disappointed when they went and they weren't able to go in. So I don't know what the process is for that, Brian, but maybe if we could get that taken care of.
I, I will talk, I will talk with the owner of the dive and we'll, we'll get the sign correctly demonstrating what is open and what is not open. Thank you.
Okay, and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Viscara?
Brian, thanks for following up on the, on the, on the COVID numbers. And, and by the way, the gym was open for a while, didn't it? The day after we had a meeting, I went by to look at it again and it was shut down. So I guess I was wrong on that one. But
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think you were wrong. It's just that things open and then they close and they open and then they close.
And, and, and you know, what was prompting me was the fact that, that we're starting all the outdoor dining. And I, I think it would bear our keeping an eye on that just in case. Other than, other than that, and, and actually we do have one more thing to look forward to this month and that's Halloween. And we're, we're, we're going to do a drive-through thing for the, for the kids. And we, the Kiwanis are going to raffle off a bike for the kids. So there's a few things to look forward to. That's it.
Thank, thank you. Mayor Procham, you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only one thing I just want to mention was that in the content calendar that we approved tonight. There is the COVID 19 continued continuity plan update. Prepared by city manager Cook. I think it's worth reading how, how Mr. Cook and his staff are keeping the city running in this special time. And also finally, that report was prepared by Mr. Brian Howarth before he moved on. So we want to thank him for his time at the city.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, that was a good reminder. You know, kind of, I, I'm glad my colleagues brought up a couple of things and that is, you know, although there's been so many changes and there's been things that we missed out on and of course, but I got to really give a, a big shout out to staff, Parks and Rec for, for trying to keep things as normal as I guess we can. And that is, you know, there's a whole lot of things that we were not able to do for the past few months. But, but they've tried their best to, to keep things still before us. A couple of examples, of course, the Relay for Life, which was held virtually last Saturday. Big shout out to Daniella and Kim and all the people who helped with that. This Saturday, we have our virtual car show. If you remember, we used to have our car show in the park. This time every, every year. Well, that's going to be a virtual car show this year. And you know, Adam and his staff, of course, did a fantastic job in putting that together. You know, and it's just a whole bunch of things that, you know, that we can point out that added to some normalcy, I guess, for the city. And, and they're very, very much appreciated, I know, not only by council, but, but also our residents and, and business owners as well. I want to mention the fact, and I think we all know that Brian Hayworth has, has left the city to take a new job. We wish him the best, of course. And his new chapter in his life and thank him for all that he has done for the city for, geez, I don't know. How many years was it, Brian? I know it's at least seven, eight years.
Good thinking. Yeah, Brian was appointed the community services director for the city of our neighboring, one of, sort of neighboring cities, San Marino. So yeah, thank you for his decade of service to the city.
Yes, thank you. And then lastly, I want to give a big shout out to Brian Arizumi. I know, I know many of us have received the emails from, from, from our city manager informing us of, of how we've kind of lent Brian to other cities. You know, Brian went beyond, above and beyond the call of duty. He, he assisted with a great deal with the fires that were going on in our communities. And you know, just, just doing a lot of stuff that, you know, I, I don't want to say he enjoys doing, but I know he likes to get out there and be involved in the community. And you know, we got a great commendation from him, from, from, who was it, Brian? I can't remember now. It was, who was it? Yeah, yeah. And so, you know, it, it was very nice of them to do that. And, and again, you know, we, we can't thank Brian enough for not only all he does for the city, but also all that he does for the region. I mean, this is not the first time he's gone outside the city to assist in, in natural disasters. And certainly I know his expertise is appreciated by all the communities that he helps. So, so thank you, Brian, for, for not only what you do here, but for what you do for all the surrounding communities. So hopefully, you know, one of these days we can get back together and give you a, a formal commendation for, for that. So thank you very much. Okay, so with that, that's all the comments I have. So we will now move on to item 15, additional public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Madam clerk, do we have any email requests to speak at this time?
No, mayor.
Okay, do we have anybody on the line?
No callers.
No callers. Okay, that makes it easy. Then I will close public comments. And with that, we are adjourned. So thank you very much. It was a long meeting, three hours, but got a lot of work done. Thank you all. Stay safe, stay healthy and we'll see you all in a couple of weeks, if not sooner. Thanks a lot. Take care.
Good night, everyone.